Okay, it's 6 o'clock, 5:59. The room is empty. Let's zoom in on the watch. There's no board members over here. There's the chairman in the back room speaking to the attorney and engineer. There's another board member went in, Justin. Be careful what you're saying, the thing is live. 6 o'clock. There's the township engineers over here, planning board secretary. Board members, two of the board members on the back, having a schmooze with the attorney. If you look at the watch, 6:01. Let's put up an agenda.
Mr. Klein, are you the narrator?
Am I what?
The narrator?
What does the narrator mean?
Well, you're narrating the meeting.
Oh. Okay, this is the agenda. We got it in focus. Supposed to start, if you look over here, 6:00 PM. But that is not, that is Lakewood time.
Yes.
No planning board members.
No board members, no cases. Let's go on the calendar, no one's here, and move on.
Could I start giving my speeches now?
Right now, we publish where?
What happened with Raitic?
Mr. Raitic said he could come and he would be late because he teaches a class.
On the first day of his job?
Well, unfortunately, he had a class that will leave through spring. And then he said he is hoping to change his schedule so he can be here right at 6:00.
What, how did he say?
I think he said 6:30, the same as Mr. Gronberger used to come, same as 4:00.
Okay, so, we don't have a call.
This is the problem with Lakewood, you can't get planning board members, just somebody that comes late and goes early. Get a regular planning board member that doesn't have a job.
Are you volunteering?
No, 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 no. What? I don't know, you go in other towns, every board member, they sit there, they wait for the applicants to come up and be able to say no.
People have lives outside of their public service, apparently. I think that's okay.
The planning board attorney is chasing everybody in the room, because it was empty, but he still doesn't have his planning board members.
And if he was coming for something, I just didn't wish to have occasion, I thought it was a different one.
Okay, whoever's watching, the meeting was supposed to start 6 o'clock, it's now 6:10. And the problem is, they're missing planning board members. They don't have a quorum to start the meeting, we only have three members.
Josh, your case isn't getting heard tonight.
Oh, I put this thing to sign on your file. Time is coming? Unfortunately, Dave and, Dave and they have a cell phone, Dave and Hector Allen have their, their home members, so if they're, and Greg does record.
What happened, Mr. Sable, he's not showing up for last few meetings.
Mr. Sable's on a hot call and Tom's over right now, if you need to know, actually. He was on a hot call and Tom's over. Because Tom's over just woke, he's like, 30 calls, he called once, he got pulled in. I didn't do that.
This planning board looks like a shul that they're trying to grab 10 people to participate in the prayer services, and they have to wait till the 10 people show up. You have a planning board that has a quorum, they don't have a quorum, that they have eight members, and they only have three members showed up, so they only have, how you call it, the Jews' mezim. So this is what's happening, whoever's watching should know what's going on over here, the meeting haven't started, but the planning board members are awol.
Mr. Raitic, our new member, and Mr. Stern are both due here in the next few minutes.
So we just got another planning board member to arrive, Mr. Sable. And it's 6:16. Brian, you get paid for it.
Yeah, were we playing your rental's team? Okay, play, yes. All right. My, my son's team was the little team from Powell, against the big kids.
Against the big kids, that was my grandson, my grandson is the center.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, he was the only one who caught the ball one time, I used to do it, he played regular football, and he's the center. And he caught the ball, and he was like, surprised, he caught it, and he started running, and then he caught something in his leg. It's like, football's always fun.
Oh, they don't, they don't.
Regular football.
They don't. My, my son was the smallest kid on the field, when it was half the size of my grandson. He lost, he's having a blast. Yeah. It's, it's exact. It's right at I-11. He fumbled a one snap, he was supposed to be running that one thing, so.
Is four members a quorum? It's five. Because we have four members inside the room discussing whatever they're doing over there. It's not an executive, but they don't have a quorum, so they could, technically, legally, they could do it. Looks bad. You see, when they, when they get together and they discuss something else, and we have to assume they're discussing something else, you know. Doesn't look kosher.
Yeah, there's more, we were expecting two more.
Five, two more.
Two more.
I guess some different question came up. Yeah, like, you'd like the schedule, right? That would, you know, this is the life, you have fun with it, that's why it's more. Yeah. Why not?
Exactly, the one he's talking about. It's, it's, buying the, again, vice president's shot. Technically, quick that, schedule that for next public hearing.
This is the second submission after a plan review?
Well, it's been one, it wasn't, yeah, it was like, it wasn't, it wasn't, it's semi complete.
Plaid, that's 25.06.
Can't get the board members to come and find?
Yeah, because we only had two on that night, so anything else?
Mr. Chairman, they gave you a board member that is initially coming late to begin with. They couldn't find the Lakewood a different board member except of Raitic, a guy that is not able to be here before 6:30, that's ridiculous. It looks like they're potentially trying to jeopardize this board, they like the zoning board, obviously is whatever's going down over there. What's going on over here?
I am my days for eight years, I just show up on time.
That's the reason why they kicked you off the board.
Okay, excellent.
Glad you're back, you want me to get him?
Thank you.
How are you? As happy as if I was in my right mind at someplace else. It looks like the planning board member has to put leashes on the planning board members to pull them in. So the last comer, from these late comers, was Bruce Stern, one of the planning board members, they're still waiting for Mr. Raitic.
Mr. Sable.
Here.
Mr. Kleinsbaum.
Here.
Mr. Hertzler.
Here.
Mr. Brenner.
Mr. Isaacson.
Mr. Meyer.
Here.
Mr. Raitic. Thank you. We have a resolution from Townsor Shooting Range, which we did a per se review last meeting.
John, I want to put on record, some people in the industrial park, told me, I want to put on record to make sure that the shooting range, I mean, they said it on record last time, that they're, they're going to build up a barn with trees to protect the vision from the industrial park that should be, that should be hidden, that's number one. And the second thing they were concerned about is the noise of the shooting range. Whatever they can do to make sure that avoids all the rules and laws and, so I know something we're doing, we're always wanted to add to them, that these were the concerns.
Well, I, what I would recommend, the assistant board has already heard that and considered it and sent this recommendation, they could send their recommendation directly to the committee, because going to be building, and then charge it, because it's not like it's a regular developer, it's the government, it's a governing body that's on the, you have the police station, so why have a, why, why do we get in the middle, let them get their comments directly to, okay.
With respect to the resolution, Mr. Sable can have vote on that if he wasn't here that night.
Your anti-publicary, any changes to the agenda?
No.
Not many to change.
No, there's not. SD 2382 by Betsy on title down, the minor subdivision create three lots on South Street.
Dave, would you like to go for the report, please?
Yes. Project is proposing three lots being created from two. It requires a minimum lot area variances for all lots, the size is, proposed size is about 14,500. It requires a minimum lot area variances for all lots, uh, the size is, proposed size is about fourteen thousand five hundred square feet, where twenty thousand square feet minimum require. The minimum lot width, uh, also requires a variance for all, all three proposed lots, the proposed widths are about seventy-five feet, where a hundred foot is required. A minimum side yard setback variance is required for proposed lot 2502, uh, where they're proposing an eight-foot side yard setback and ten is required. And a combined, uh, minimum side yard setback is also required for proposed lot 25.04, where that, uh, proposed combined setback is seventeen point one one feet and twenty-five feet is required. There are also a couple of variances for, uh, accessory structure, uh, rear yard accessory structure setback is required for proposed lot 2502. Uh, the rear yard will be one point eight feet, whereas ten is required, and that's for an existing shed to remain in place. And that, uh, uh, also, uh, a side yard setback for an existing shed to remain in place on the same lot, 2502. Uh, the side yard setback is two point two feet, whereas ten feet is required.
That's it, those variances?
That's, yup, that's every variances.
Basically everyone. Anything else that you want to know?
Uh-uh, no, no design waivers on this.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Schwann.
Do you swear a first testimony to give me first word with the truth of the matter?
I do, so Mr. Schwann, taking the engineering services, minus one, New Jersey. Uh, so the proposed application is to subdivide the two existing lots into three, uh, I have, uh, for you the subdivision plan by right, uh, and left of that is a map showing other approved subdivisions in this block. Uh, the green is the property, subject property, uh, the yellow are other subdivisions that have exist, have occurred, specifically, uh, lot 26 and 32 was subdivided, uh, as well as, uh, eighteen, thirty, twenty-seven, twenty-four, and twenty-four oh one. All those are exactly the same dimensions as this, uh, application, two existing one hundred and thirteen point two foot wide lots, being subdivided into three lots that are approximately seventy-five feet wide.
The green and the yellow are all the same size?
Uh, they're not exactly the same size, but most are, so these two are exactly the same size, these six are exactly the same size. Uh, these three here are a little bit larger, uh, they had a little extra area, uh, and these two is an odd shaped, odd sized lot here, this one winds up being an eighty-five foot lot, that's seventy-five.
What was the square footage on the yellow lots?
The yellow lots are all just shy of fifteen thousand square feet, which is, uh. Fourteen five twenty-six, uh, the lots here, all three were fourteen five twenty-six, these nine lots were fourteen five twenty-six. Uh, so variances, uh, as, uh, Dave had indicated, the lot area and lot width, uh, are commensurate with the area, again, the board has approved a number of these, uh, in the area. Uh, there are not a substantial amount of lots that actually conform, uh, of the interior lots, there's four which actually conforming with, uh, and, and six which don't, and you don't include this particular lot. Uh, so the majority of lots are actually not conforming with, uh, and as well as every lot, the opposite side of the street are all not conforming with, uh, a hundred feet required, those are ninety foot lots.
But they're all twenty thousand foot.
Uh, those lots across have the benefit of, uh, depth.
Of the area.
Correct.
They're not undersized lots, man.
They're not, they're not undersized on the opposite side, but this side, there are, uh, a substantial amount that are undersized, uh, specifically, uh, these three lots, uh, twenty-six and thirty-two, which was just recently filed, um, lots thirty-one oh two, thirty-one oh three, and the two lots, uh, twenty-eight were approved. Are all undersized in area as well. Uh, these be granted under the C two criteria, uh, the proposal's more conforming with the other properties in the street, uh, it's exactly the same as a number of the subdivisions, specifically, one immediately down the street, which was, uh, recently filed. Uh, the majority of lots on the street are non-conforming, uh, the majority of lots in the southern side are also non-conforming in, uh, area. Uh, the proposed site promotes the general welfare by developing consistent with, uh, development patterns in the area. Uh, the 2017 master plan indicates a need to address significant population growth, uh, so this application does promote the purposes of planning, promotes the general welfare, and promotes appropriate, uh, uh, population densities, and provide the areas for residential development to meet the needs of the, uh, the area. Uh, will be no substantial detriment, as lots of this exact size exist in the neighborhood, uh, and, uh, you know, function, uh, within the neighborhood. The, uh, proposal will have, uh, set thick systems, we designed set thick systems on these lots, uh, any other subdivisions, which will have no, uh, negative impact. Uh, the only other variances being requested are those side yard setback variances, specifically on lot twenty-five point oh four. Intent there is purely, is an existing home, which would straddle the property line that's being created, we're gonna pick up the house and move it over, uh, onto this lot. So intent there is, uh, to save the home, which would promote the general welfare, uh, but would require relief, eight feet on one side, nine feet on the other, uh, so a total of, uh, eight foot one side and a combined of, uh, sixteen feet.
So one lot is now vacant, and then there's a home on the other lot?
Yeah, so basically, right now, there's a property line down the middle with two homes. Uh, the eastern home, uh, can remain, does not require any relief, once we create the subdivision. The western home straddles the property line, so we're gonna pick that up and move it, and require some relief in order to, uh, move it onto this property, which will create one new home, or one new lot in there.
I know, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the area, I've heard that in a lot, uh, there are, there are a bunch of new single family, um, detached houses that are built, is that, you know, if anything can be built down on South Street, or is something?
Yeah, uh, right now, these, these three lots are under construction.
They're, they're under construction, right?
Yup.
They're, they're nice houses.
Yeah. Uh, the, the neighborhood is, is in a turnover right now, there's, uh, you know, there's a considerable amount of homes that were in disrepair, smaller homes, so the intent is to.
Years ago, we talked about, uh, you know, neighborhoods that were developed with, uh, multi-family residential housing, that hasn't happened, the neighborhood's actually turned into a very nice.
Yeah.
Um, uh, end user type of, uh, s- single family detached houses.
Nice single family homes, third acre.
Nice area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else?
That beautiful?
We agree, we approve it. Can you discuss the, uh, accessory structure setbacks for the board?
Uh, the accessory structure setbacks, I apologize, I forgot about that, accessory structure setbacks are sheds in the backyard. Uh, sheds in the backyard of the existing home, again, this is the home that stays in place, uh, so this lot, we're just looking to keep what they have.
Nothing to the shed, huh?
Uh, it's small, um, there's two small sheds. The one shed is six by eight, the other one is eight by ten.
It's the small sheds that they want to keep out of the garage?
Yeah. Uh, so we, we'd seek to keep those, well, variances granted under C one, they're existing.
And that's the house that's staying?
That's the house that's staying, house moving, it's staying exactly in place, moving, keep that in the accessory. Uh, that is, it leaves a little bit of a mess.
Just one second. Would like to welcome Mr. Bruce Raythick, coming up to the microphone. Uh, would like to swan right now?
Sure, I can put him on the room now. Mr. Raythick, please, uh, rise and raise your right hand, I state your name, to solemnly affirm, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance, and allegiance to the state, and to the governments established, in the United States, and in this state, under the authority of the people, and that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform, all of the duties of the office of the Lakewood Township Planning Board, to the best of my abilities, so help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you for coming to work.
Mr. Raythick, we are in the middle of one application, but since you weren't here for the whole thing, you can observe for this one, and if you'd like to participate following that, you can.
You can, you can speak, but you can't, uh, vote on this application. Okay, I'm sorry.
Welcome. Uh, so I would conclude my testimony, unless the board has any questions.
Any, what wants to have any questions for that? So seeing now, we'll open for public, I don't know if the public like to be heard, just come forward.
Do you swear a first testimony to give me first word with the board?
I affirm.
Please state your name.
Slime McLean.
Your address?
Um, lot four thirty oh two, lot seventeen. Um, that's how you do the public announcements, uh, hypnotizing, so you don't put addresses, so I do the same. I just heard the testimony of this engineer, and I felt like we have once a year, you're a keeper, as we say, all our sins, and by the other religion, we go through priests, and you just tell them all sins that you did. So that's how I felt over here, he's coming up and then saying is, you should approve this, because we did this sin already by this lot, by this lot, by this lot, by this lot, all over the neighborhood. So it felt like, uh, it's like, um, he cleansed himself over here. But as far as, again, as far as the applicant, it's a single family home, it's not a duplex, the duplex is the one that destroyed Lakewood. Um, a single family home would be nice to have all over Lakewood, and if the guy is able to subdivide his lot, like, he wants to do it maybe in two out of three, he will almost double as much as double, but he will gain a lot of money, so I can't just object to somebody making money, so I'm not going to stand over here to object or not object, it's not a town, and I will leave it over to the judgment of the board. If somebody comes in and says is, listen, we did so much sins in this neighborhood, let's do one more, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Schwann, what's with sidewalks, the front?
We're proposing sidewalks.
The front of walls we propose?
Correct.
And garbage?
Uh, garbage, uh, again, you know, they're later, they'll have, uh, garbage cans that'll stay on the property, we brought up, uh, garbage can.
Thank you. Want to ask for a motion on this application?
It's scary making a motion on the application to approve it, which I'm about to do, because I don't want to, I don't want to give the wrong idea that applications, with, with variances like this are going to be accepted by the board, but, um, I, I think this neighborhood's appropriate, and, uh, single family detached residences on fifteen thousand square feet lots, approximately, I think is a nice product for the town, so, um, I'll make a motion to, to approve the application.
Can we have a second? Mr. Stern, seconds, roll call.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
No.
Mr. Kleinsbaum?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzel?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
No. Application's denied.
Proof.
I thought you said no, I thought I heard, uh.
I miscounted.
I was always bad at math, math. Except when it comes to dividing by one third.
So for the record, they have given proof?
I don't, I don't, I don't put my neck out there again.
Thank you very much, that was.
Next application is SB twenty-three fifteen for CBRC LLC, major site plan for retail strip law and pad site located on Cedar River Deck.
Through the chair, before we start the application, I, I would just like to welcome my chief as well, my chief, nice to see you, happy to be here.
He's a democrat.
Well, we do have cameras, and if you'd like to sit back and watch, you can observe as well.
Why not?
Okay, uh, Dave, want to go through the report?
Yes, uh, project requires, uh, submission waivers, uh, the issue with this project is that the, uh, the, the design, uh, proposed retaining walls that are conflicting with, uh, other, other, uh, utilities, proposed drainage, as well as, uh, existing drainage that's owned by the township, and and my concern is that there may, the correct positions may require moving, uh, items around on the site plan. However, I, for the record, I would suggest that at least the, uh, project start the public hearing, even if it has to be continued.
So let's go back to waivers, and C says, you don't recommend that we, I'm asking you.
Normally, I would say don't grant it, but like I said, like I said, I know there's time pressures by the board, and I would suggest at least starting the application, because there's even the engineering testimony, planning testimony, traffic testimony, and they also said they would have testimony from a project architect, so.
Through the chair, maybe I can, again, I don't know, something, maybe we hear the application before we consider the submission waivers.
I know, but if we take a vote tonight, we have to vote on the waivers.
Well, what I'm saying is, I, I don't make, we hear the application, let's not, let's not vote on the waivers right now, let's hear the application, and then, and then, yeah, we can start.
We have to vote in the end on the waivers too. Okay, and, uh, C thirty, C thirteen, that's, uh.
Uh, that, that, the, uh, other submission waiver for environmental impact statement is not an issue, because this is part of the large Cedar Bridge development area, and, which got a CAPRA permit a long time ago, and all the environmental impact, uh, statements were done at that time, so that could be.
Okay, one vote on the zoning?
There's, uh, there's no variances proposed, there are some, uh, design waivers that are, that are required. One is the, uh, along, along Cedar Bridge Avenue, going to the west, as you can see on the, uh, on the, uh, rendering up to the left, where the green area is, there are wetlands, and they're not proposing to, uh, add curb and sidewalk along that part of Cedar Bridge, because of wetlands.
In the wetlands?
Correct, yeah, yeah, the wetlands virtually go up to the, to the road. So, so they would, they would be either going in the wetlands, or in the wetland buffer, to construct the curb and sidewalk.
Yeah, that's why they're asking for that waiver, can't do it.
And then the other design waiver, uh, will be buffering from the, uh, from the neighboring sites, which, uh, which are now, uh, actually under construction out there.
Okay, thank you.
Are they anticipating pedestrian traffic? That they would want sidewalks?
Well, they can't, they'll. Not, not from the west, because the, all the area to the west is undeveloped because of wetlands, and, and will remain that way. So I, they, I would say the proposal from where they're starting the curb and sidewalk, which is at, which is at the traffic light, uh, where the road intersection crosses the street on the north side, I think that's reasonable.
Just have to vote, it's ready to, we try, we hope it possible, the sidewalks will, really, finish forming on that, unless it's a wetlands, which we can't vote. Okay, Mr. Doyle?
Mr. Chairman, members, congratulations to the new member, it's always nice to see younger people around. I'm speaking myself, Mr. Chairman. David mentioned some issues and some concerns, and I'm going to leave that to Mr. Flannery, but let me just put that in an overall setting for a couple of minutes, uh, first. This is a situation, an area, and a development, that is in some ways the last step to what a lot has gone into to bring us to this step. This is, as your engineers report, says, part of the Cedar Bridge corporate campus overall development, as he mentioned, that got a CAPRA approval. As he mentioned, we are beset by wetlands, so all of those were givens that we had to work with. We had drainage coming down to our property that we resolved at our cost, though, was, and off the premises properly. So we all worked to get to the point we're at. So we've all worked to get to the point we're at. More recently, this area was subdivided. Even more recently, the other two lots got site plan approval. All of the ingress, egress access was with that three lot subdivision in mind. The architecture for this project is similar to that for lots five and six. So we come to this point like knocking down dominoes and this is the last one. And we think that when you hear everything, you'll understand and acknowledge that one of the issues is caused by the township. And we think that that pipe that now is the township's, though built at my client's cost, will understand that and they will be a part of the solution. As an approval would be a part of the solution. So with that background generally, let me have Mr. Flannery respond.
Just for our firm testimony before this work with the whole truth and nothing else?
I do. Brian Flannery, the ICSU Jersey Licensed Professional Engineer and Professional Planner. I've marked some exhibits. A one is a perspective rendering of the site.
Flannery, um, I think you had also indicated the board being a, you might also be providing architectural testimony on the site.
I, I, uh, I'm a registered architect, uh, and also a land surveyor in case we have any surveying.
So, uh, the board recognizes Mr. Flannery.
I don't like it.
I don't like it.
So, uh, A one is a perspective rendering of the site. It, it shows the one-story retail. You can see off to the, uh, to the right-hand side of it is the, uh, proposed CAD site. Uh, and the architecture is going to be similar to the architecture that of the buildings on the site plans that were recently adopted, as John alluded to, uh, to the east of this site where the access to both Cedar Bridge Avenue and Avenue of the States is. Uh, and, and the, uh, A two is a, a concept, uh, rendering, uh, of the site. It shows the, uh, development to the east as well. And that, that actually wraps all the way around the development. So, uh, we have, we're bounded to the north by Cedar Bridge Avenue, to the, uh, west by a, a large wetland area. And you can see that better in, in A four, which is the tax maps in the area put together just to show you that our site, which is, uh, just west of Avenue of the States, uh, butts up to a conservation area and it's a very large conservation area owned by the township of Lakewood, uh, going all the way out to Vine with the exception of one private ownership lot right at the intersection of Vine. But that is all, uh, de-restricted conservation areas that was done as part of the original subdivision. It's a three-hundred-foot, uh, buffer on a C-one stream with some threatened endangered species in there. So that's area that is not to be, uh, disturbed other than the period of time where the, and city was there and, and it was disturbed with people living in there. But as of now, that's, uh, open space that will remain open space. Uh, uh, and, uh, again, as indicated, the wetland, the wetland buffers and, and, uh, stream parker buffer go right up to the existing road. I, I, I wanted to show you A four so you can see that it's not like sidewalk down in that direction would be ever be extended. There's no need for pedestrians walking in that area. Uh, we have sidewalk in front of our site up to the, uh, wetland area. The sidewalk comes all the way around the site to the, to the intersection. There's a traffic light at the intersection to eighty people crossing the street for any pedestrian access that there would be to the, to the site. A, A three is, uh, just elevations of the buildings, again, showing the, the, the straight-on elevation look of what the buildings are like. And it'll be a, a mixture of, uh, of different textures. Uh, the, the buildings will have sprinkler systems. Uh, we, we don't know who the users are at this point. Uh, but it will be retail shops similar to the, the uses in the, the ones that were previously. And again, it was the same testimony that once we get approval, we'll look for the tenants to go in there, but it would be the same type of uses. Uh, all of the HDAC, uh, equipment would be roof mounted and shielded. Uh, and the, the buildings would be in a brick and cast stone veneer with resin panels in various colors of interest and muddles, metal sun shades and, and scorching glass systems. These are the same type of architecture that's in the, uh, project that's addressed. Uh, and, and A five i- is a, uh, a, a, a concept site plan without the. Looking at the report, the, the one thing that, you know, as I would point out, uh, is that it's a variance-free application. We provide it partly in excess of the ordinance requirement. The ordinance requires one hundred and sixty-five spaces, uh, and two hundred and forty-seven spaces are provided. As indicated in the RBD report on page three, under zoning, it's a permitted use and no bulk variances are requested. With respect to the submission waivers that Dave indicated earlier, uh, the submission waiver is for profiles. We're not asking to not do profiles. We're asking for the board to take action on it prior to the profile. We would provide them as part of, uh, resolution compliance so that your engineer can be satisfied that there are no conflicts and everything would work. I review the plan from an engineering standpoint, uh, and, and I am confident with my years of experience that this is something that can be fixed. Retaining wall is needed around the front and side of the site because the, the retail building has to be level. We don't have steps and the steps cause tripping hazards and, and cause problems for the tenants and the users. In order to keep that flat, if we put the retaining wall in, would that, hey, it changes the configuration of the property. It, it's my testimony that the layout that is safe
Will stay.
will stay the same.
No change.
And that, and that engineering details and stuff under the ground is what may change. Uh, and, and we will provide documentation to satisfy the board engineer that those engineering systems under the ground are appropriate. We need to get a developer's agreement from the governing body. Uh, I, I, again, I, I've worked in this field in this town for a long time. You, you've seen me here maybe more often than, than you, you'd like to. But I'm, I'm telling you that this can be worked out in this configuration. And, and the worst case is if, if I'm wrong, is we would have to come back to the board. But I, I'm giving you.
If we approve, we approve of what we see.
You're approving what the, the plan estimate. Uh, and the engineering details.
Don't say more.
Here, here, here's my issue, issue. You, you've testified that you don't have tenants yet. And I'm, I'm sure your, uh, building design is no more than conceptual at this point. You, you have a surplus of old street parking, which is good. But I don't see why we can't revise the plan to take all the proposed improvements out of the drainage, the township drainage easement, which you can do because you can change the building. You can change your old street parking. You have, you have almost a hundred spaces extra. And, and you'll still have plenty of surplus parks. That's, that's my issue and why I think the plan should change somewhat.
Brian, let me ask you, if you do medical, this becomes a medical, you still have those parking?
It, it's, it's not designed for medical and, and I don't envision medical. It's not, it's not a location that's targeted for medical. But there would be enough parking for some medical. Our position on the parking is, and, and I think if you look, the, the master plan was just about it. There were two issues that, that were the big issues, traffic congestion and parking. We, we want to have more parking. The parking in the, uh, township easement, we will have to get the, as part of the developer's agreement, the township committee to agree to it. Uh, it's, it's my testimony that I would expect from my years of experience that they would agree to it because, uh, they would prefer to see the parking too. The parking i- is a plus. Uh, there are very few, uh, retail sites in Lakewood that you drive by and see empty parking spaces. We'd like to have this be one of them.
Brian, whatever your end user will be, you have enough parking spaces?
That is correct. Uh, this is what we pointed out today. Uh, you can see on A two as far as the parking spaces in the drainage easement, uh, on the previous approval, the raw parking spaces in the drainage. This is different in that the pipe is going to go under the retaining wall. Uh, and, and that's not something that, that you do if you don't have to. It's my testimony in reviewing this. In order to make a site that makes sense, that is the right thing to do. And there are engineering ways to do it to make sure that the maintenance is satisfactory. We need DPW approval, which we will get. And we need the, the township to sign the developer's agreement, which, which I am a hundred percent confident we will get. So, uh, it, it's my testimony that those details can be worked out as part of resolution compliance. They don't affect the, uh, site utility or the, uh, site planning issues associated with this. Their technical engineering details, uh, which may cost more money. There's other options that the, uh, the developer may need to, uh, spend some additional money in order to satisfy public works in the township committee. But they can be satisfied and the applicant is willing. The applicant is willing to do what needs to be done without changing the site plan features.
Mr. Chairman, if I just.
Mr. Chairman, you asked, what happens if they change their mind and they need the committee?
He, he said, I'm sorry.
No, I said, no changes to the plan.
It's a gentleman, I can't hear you.
We don't know what the end user is going to be. And, uh, we have a problem with about the drainage, right? The retaining wall with the drainage.
Correct. Correct. Well, Mr. Flannery has said that they can engineer and, and make that work.
Make it work without changing anything to the.
Right, that's what his.
That is my testimony.
That's what his hat. And we can hold him to that. And if he can't, he'll have to come back. He's saying this works and the committee's going to sign off. It's in his peril if it does it. It's kind of like an outside agency approval.
And, and it's an outside of agency approval with the township that we got a developer's agreement for the other two lots. So if you look at this in a sense as that the overriding thing is a partnership that includes the private property owner, includes the township, and includes your approval, that has worked on the other two lots, we think that it would work here. If there's a glitch and we're wrong, we have to come back here. So there's a fail slip.
Do some.
Mr. Chairman, I really is asking approval for this layout. If we can't give it someone a resolution compliance, we'll have to come back for it immediately?
Now it'll be on us.
Questions? Board agrees with them?
Yes. Terry, explain. Tell me your question again and then Brian answer your question.
Steve is much better than Terry. Next age.
So Steve. I'll put Terry's name out there. What was your question in simple terms and then Brian answered?
Yeah, well, my, the point I was making in his testimony, he, he acknowledged that they had the surplus parking, that they didn't have end users yet. And my question to him was, well, why can't you revise the plan and take all the improvements out of the township easement? Because you don't know and you probably can't do that.
But then you would lose parking spaces.
It might lose some, yes.
But you said, is it going to impact the drainage? There's not enough design to tell right now. That's part of the problem. That's, that's why that submission waiver is in the report.
I, well, I think, I, it, I, just, oh, because I just come across this thing sometimes. You always avoid trying to put anything beneath the retaining wall.
What's that?
You always try to avoid putting anything, any type of utility beneath the retaining walls.
Right.
If something happens.
You can't take them up.
Then you fix it. Right? You gotta fix it. You gotta take everything apart. So, um, I think this case, it's a matter of playing pros and cons, right? So on the one hand, you have like eighty-some additional parking spaces, right, according to this proposal. And the proposal from an engineering perspective, maybe it's not, it's not really what you want to see, but you have so many additional parking spaces that you may potentially lose if you try to do a more, um, uh, customary type of design with these, if you have to grant these orders. So if not, again, I don't think it's a matter of having incomplete plans. It's a matter of, you know, weighing, you know, what do we want to do? Do we want them to lose along the additional parking spaces and try to come up with a more customary type of design? Or do we want to see if the engineers can make this work? And I'm not an engineer, uh, but, right? I mean, that's.
Who's responsible for the drainage? The owner or the township?
The, currently the way it's set up, the, the drainage that's picked up from Avenue of the States, the township is responsible. And if the township decides in the developer's agreement process that they don't want to be responsible for that, then the applicant will be responsible.
This retaining wall is being built on top of a place where the township is responsible right now for it?
Yes, it is. And, and I, I should point out that the water has to go into the conservation area. Uh, in order to make a site that makes sense here, that's a, a, a good site for the tenants and for the, uh, for the, uh, uh, people going to the site, you need to have some retaining wall. There, there's, there's no way to, to not do a retaining wall and make it flat on a site of this size where we have the entrances are tying into fixed points. So we're going to need some retaining wall. So there, as, as Justin indicates, you don't put it there if you don't have to. But there are things you can do. You, you can encase it. You can use a, a, a stronger class pipe so there's a less chance of doing it. Uh, and the worst case is you make the responsibility for it the, uh, the property owner and then it doesn't cost the township money. So you can fix them on the retaining walls. It costs extra money. So if the township decides that that's something that they don't want that responsibility, they have the option, option during the, the developer's agreement process. And what we need DPW process to say that's what they want. As Dave was indicating that, is the plans aren't complete because all the details of this aren't there. But I'm, I'm telling you, those are engineering details that I feel very confident with my experience that we can provide and we can satisfy RBD and we can satisfy DPW on the township.
Mr. Franklin would be here. He would say the township will never accept responsibility if there's a retaining wall above the drainage.
Well, that never, never is a long time, but again, that's, as John indicates, that's like an outside agency approval. And this applicant will take the responsibility for that, uh, if that's what's needed to get it approved.
But he's not suggesting the township take responsibility for that. He's suggesting that the township could shift that responsibility to the property owner.
Yes.
And I, 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 you know, we're, we're talking about like this is building the Hoover Dam. I can't imagine taking out a retaining wall, excavating a pipe in the unlikely event, right? How long do those pipes go?
Uh, again, and you, and there are certain things from an engineering perspective that you could do to, to be, so to speak, like rise, you can encase the pipe, there's that's the drills you could use. You can, you can work things out. I think we've.
Right.
We see it all the time.
So if the township's not satisfied, then they'll say no, and then they'll be back here with the reason.
The township, or the township can say you take care. You own it, or if something happens, it's on you.
Since the agreement the township has sent an engineering advice, we'll have this. Please RBD, so we, we just wanted to start that there.
So Brian, again, if we're continuing, but we're continuing based on the existing plans that you're showing yourself.
Yes.
And based on the fact that, I think you said, no matter, right? Or whatever you can have in there, you have excess parking.
That is correct. And, and, that's.
Whatever the end user will be.
Yes, correct. Correct. We, we're not asking for a parking variance and in addition, we're providing a, a large amount of excess parking because we want this to be the site that had no parking.
You have to satisfy the engineer on the drainage and any deviation to, um, bring it back to board.
That is correct.
So, uh, is that okay, Dave? What I just said?
Yeah, the, the summary as well, yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Continuing the report, the, the design waiver that we're asking for, uh, two of them that are listed is the sidewalks, which I've explained, which are only for, uh, the area where it's in the conservation and buffer area where nobody's going to be walking anyway.
Can you show some plan, I just want to point that exactly with conservation, conservation cooperation?
We've provided sidewalk along the front edge of the site. When you get to the end of the site, you can see where the conservation easement is. We're, we're not doing any curving or, or paving in that area.
Just, just on the corner of the site? Is that, I can't.
Well, you, you can see on the plans that are submitted.
Would you be able to walk over to the, just to the?
Well, I, I don't know that this, I don't know that this rendering shows.
Just, I mean, it's, it's, I don't know.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's right up to the edge of the, the corner of the property.
Why do you require the sidewalk after this block?
That's why I'm a little bit unclear. I think you spoke about the edge of this old property. I just want to see, we can see it exactly on the render. You can't show us on the render at A one?
Uh, no, A one you can't see because.
No, no, A one is, is one to your left, right?
This, this is A one?
No, that's A five.
Well, I, I, the architect called this A five and that A one.
On the traffic plan, it shows very clear.
Yeah, on, on, on T3 of, on T3 of 17 it shows.
Or 15 of 17, even better.
Okay. Yeah, at, at the, the property corner is 150 feet past where we're developed.
Okay, now, 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 okay. So, in other words, across the entire front is what you're, what you could develop within, within the wetlands regulations. You are providing curved sidewalk.
Correct.
But west of it, where you can't develop, with the wetlands buffer, you're saying, you're asking for a design waiver for the curved sidewalk because you can't build curved sidewalk.
Because we're, because we're not allowed to put it there and, and because it's not needed.
So, I wanna correct that. My wife walks this twice a week. She walks from here, she's, she walks all the way up to the avenue, twice a week, and there's no sidewalk over there. I drove that with my wife. She said, I walk this almost twice a week.
Well, there, there's never gonna be sidewalk here.
With outside, you said that no, no need for, there isn't tremendous need for that.
Well, there's, there's...
For stable found.
Well, okay, so, so there is a need for sidewalk all the way from mine in here. But that's never gonna be built.
Yeah, no.
Correct, but you said there's no need, so there is a need, but we can't do that.
Okay, I, I was talking about the need for the extra little bit of sidewalk.
On the street?
Yes.
I agree, there's a need. There is a need, but...
Okay.
Thank you. I wish we could do something to that.
Access to the street, maybe a little bridge, a little walkway that goes over to what then?
The, the access, uh, the access for, for this, uh, property comes out to the adjoining one. Uh, and then goes out to Cedar Bridge, and, and there's sidewalk on Cedar Bridge, and there's sidewalk up to the intersection where you can see...
So, that's not the area you're working in right now?
Well, the, the area that's being worked on right now is, is the property to the east of us, which was approved several months ago. Uh, and...
And there quite a sidewalk in there?
That, that has a sidewalk. That, that is constructing sidewalk all along the ground.
Because it's physically an environmental, governmental obstacle to put it there. And it is gonna be there, as it will be directly in front of our buildings.
But you can access it from your property? There's no gap in between, that's, that's what I'm asking.
Correct, there, there is no gap. There, there would be no way for somebody from this building to come straight to the sidewalk because there's a retaining wall there. Somebody coming from this site to the sidewalk would walk out to, uh, the, the entrance and then out to the site.
How high is that retaining wall gonna be there?
Uh, it, it varies in height, um... At the corner, it's about six feet high.
Is that the highest point?
It goes from zero to six, let me see. I don't, I don't see anything over, I, I see one that's seven and a half feet. No, that's not along the front.
That is the only one with front.
Oh, yeah, along the front, it's right, at, at this corner, it's six feet. And then it goes down to the zoo.
And that's intended to keep the wetlands from draining into the...
No, that's intended to keep the site...
The elevation, yeah, yeah.
To keep the elevation so that... Right.
So, the wetlands will not be disturbed in any way going through the water to pass through, even though there's a sidewalk on the east side of it, right? In other words, currently, is the water in your area passing through where you're trying to propose in the building right now?
Currently, in the, uh, existing state, water that, that, when it rains, water flows toward the wetlands. What's gonna happen now is that water that, that falls on the property is gonna be picked up on pipe, directed to the other pipe, and directed to a stable out. So, it'll go to the same place, it'll just go in the...
It's not going into the sewer.
Well, it goes into the storm sewer, which is connected to it. It doesn't go into the...
Designated sewer for the clean water.
Yes, yes. Well, all in, first it goes into, it gets...
It'll just be diverted a little bit, but it's gonna end up in the same place.
And it goes to, uh, stormwater basins where it has time for the sediment to drop out. It was all done in a, in a caper. So, the second design waiver that, that's indicated in the RBE report is for landscape buffers. Uh, and, and again, as I indicated, we have, uh, no landscape buffers required to Cedar Bridge Avenue. Uh, it would be my opinion that a landscape buffer is not, uh, required or appropriate between the sites because it's the, the same use. Uh, and the only other side where we have, uh, it is to a, a wetland derriere, which certainly doesn't mean that a... So, I, I, I think from a technical standpoint, we're requesting that waiver, but as a practical matter, there's no buffer that's required or provided because we, we are surrounded by the, that same type of use in an application that was just done and had char, carved out to allow for this and a wetlands conservation. The, continuing the report, it talks about the parking again where we have, uh, an excess of parking. Um, the comment for Dave's report was that you could comment with respect to making some changes which would eliminate the parking. Our position is we'd rather have more parking and not make those changes. Uh, in, in item seven, he also talks about reducing the impervious area. Again, we have a caper approval for this amount of impervious area, and, and we would prefer to have extra parking. Uh, a traffic analysis was submitted, uh, by Dick Dunn and Ray. It shows that the driveway entrances have, uh, level of service C. So, our, our site, uh, traffic is handled properly. There's a circulation plan that shows a, a single unit truck can maneuver through the site, and, and that would be the type of trucks we envisioned for these type of uses, similar to, uh, the, the other buildings of this type that were recently approved. Uh, the, it's a permitted use, uh, so that limits any impacts on, on the website. Uh, and, and, and we have a, we're on a county road, so we need a county approval. And basically, we will do whatever the county requires us to get that county approval.
Semi-trailsers will not be able to fit in here.
That's correct.
So, if Coca-Cola decides to drop over here, uh, shipment, they're not be able to do it? Or any...
Well, a, a, anyone coming to the site would know the site availability. And the, and the merchants, when they order stuff, they would know the site availability, uh, traffic...
Those, those were them.
Well, it...
I don't choose the trucks that come to my store. Everybody stands with every truck they want. You agree, it might be a... We don't know what the end user is gonna be, so it makes it difficult.
Well, and, and, and we're not envisioning a, a supermarket that have that... You are?
A retail pizza store, something that'll be over here.
It's supposed to...
It's gonna be food, and it's gonna be good jobs.
Well, the, the, the pizza stores and, and those type of uses don't, uh, don't require any, a large shipment. I mean, they...
They only deliver with semi-trailsers.
Yeah. A piece right next to me, he gets his coke, and he gets his boxes delivered by the, by the semi. Interesting. Okay.
We'll buy it, we'll buy it, so...
And everybody, because it's so expensive for a delivery service, they try to put everything semi-trailers and they go home.
Well, I, I, uh, happened, do happen to have my CDC license, so I...
Have it too?
Yes, I did.
You drive as well?
I, I driven a tractor trailer. And, and although the charts show that the tractor trailer does, can't get in there, the tractor trailer can get in there, I'm sure that's what...
Okay, you ship it, you be driving the truck.
Uh, I'm, I'm sure that's what happens on the other site. Is that even though the engineer's charts show it doesn't work, the, the vehicles get in.
Or they park on the roadway.
Or park on the edge.
Well, if they have no option, they have to make a delivery. They'll do it seven times to do themselves, too.
Uh, I just think for the future, anytime we deal with big buildings and retail buildings, we have to accommodate the big trucks. I, I see all stores getting deliveries. Go on, click, and I can, you see the, the semis are double parked in the middle, street blocking the traffic all the way because there's nowhere to go for the trucks. Can you change it? And I go, gone to the next one, I see there's not loading dock here, so you're not expecting to have any deliveries?
If you just shift it over, it wouldn't accommodate the issues.
Well, we, we could, we could provide a, uh, loading area and eliminate a few of the parking spaces for the time that a tractor trailer shows up.
If, if you have, the way you say, 100 parking spaces in excess...
We have extra parking and...
How much would you lose to put a loading dock in place for a truck?
We, we should be able to, with a, a loss of, in the, with a ballpark of 10 spaces, and we have close to 100 extra.
The less than we need is a big semi avenue of states just sitting there waiting for them to do.
Or unloading.
Or unloading, for sure.
You want, how you want behind the building, not, not in front.
I mean, because they'll come with the truck, they'll just sit and wait until it's...
The total square footage is 33,000, with six doors, or 5,500 for a big store that doesn't just keep a large...
Although I'm not in retail business, neither are you. But we do have some retailers on the court, and apparently they think that the big trucks, they say the big trucks do come, so, I mean, they, they come for big stores and small stores. You know, the chairman's saying that, you know, Coca-Cola, because of the cost, they, they just have big trucks that make stops for all the small stores. So, I mean, that's, that's the fact, and that's...
Coes for, oh, point to the semi-drills.
Yeah, I mean...
I've limited to my own time, but...
You're the chairman. So, I, I, you know, and, and if they have a place to go, they'll just sit on that, stay on one way. I mean, that, that's what I...
That's population growth, more, more deliveries and more trucks.
Brian, in my opinion, I don't know what it was been, if you have a lot of extra spaces, try to get a loading dock and, and room for a truck in there. If you lose 10, 15 spaces, you still have excess of, you said 100.
We, we would agree then to, to fit in a, uh, a loading area for a semi.
You said that circulation will not be normal, so...
Well, the, the circulation plan was designed for that. We have to make the radiuses larger, which means closer to parking spaces. We, we will figure a circulation route for a semi-trailer. Uh, and, and, and we would lose less than 20 parking spaces and, and provide a way for it to park.
If the board would, uh, as a condition, say that we will submit a conceptual alternative plan with that, and then let's work with the engineer, pick the right solution.
Whatever you do, I want you to have enough parking space. I don't want you to ask for...
Right.
You, you're saying it's not 20 blocks...
We're not gonna ask for a variance for parking, but if we lose 15 parking spaces to accommodate it, we're still in excess of it. Okay, and, and it's still a comfortable parking range. And the reality is, that there's really a big problem, people parking the loading dock. Uh, because...
That's true.
That's, so it's like a, in case there's a truck, uh, but if there's not a truck, uh, and there's a, a high demand for some reason, it's, it's like a bank parking area.
Is there gonna be parking behind the building for the staff or for workers?
No, there's no parking behind the building.
So, that's just an emergency fire lane right there?
That, that's a access for the box trucks and, and a loading area for the box trucks that we've done.
How wide is that area right now?
One-way, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a one-way, um...
Big trucks can't get there.
Even the way you designed the regular trucks, the tightest, they have to come in and back and out.
Very tight corner.
No, they back, and they make a turn. Even regular trucks cannot make the regular turn.
Uh, there's a circulation plan that we showed that shows that a...
Did you see? I don't think you would approve this. Can't even make a full left turn.
T15 shows the circulation, uh, plan and, and the turning radiuses, uh, for the, the truck coming in. It shows that it works.
But is it side loaded? I mean, how, you can't like back the truck in.
Yeah, you don't back the truck in, you, you, it's side loaded.
What you're gonna have to do is blocking the entire... Right, or one-way. Well, they're forced to load it, so...
Well, it's a, it's a pretty lengthy loading.
But narrow.
It's at 200, 240 by 15.
But it's narrow, so if the truck decides to stop there, or in...
Well, I mean, if a truck decides to stop, it's all the way, it's all the way to the corner. It's not like it's blocking the entire... Just to put this in perspective for a second, we're not blocking access, we're not blocking parking lots. It's, it's, I understand, but it's, again, it might, I mean, the way you see it, that if a truck had to turn around in that corner, it'd be in the back corner of the building. Wouldn't be in the front of the building.
Trucks can so...
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Who does that all?
Well, again, again, people park behind the building on diagonals when there's not enough parking. We're providing parking in excess and substantially in excess on the ordinary truck. We, we, we have 30 feet from the back of the building for the curb. So, that is plenty of room for one truck to stop and let another truck attack.
As well as the fact, I think you've got 240 feet and 30 foot truck. You can queue eight trucks if they were all there at the very same moment, which is rather...
It's 18 feet at the two bulges.
That is a joke, because it's 18 feet.
18 feet here, here, in the loading area, it's 30.
Nice part of it is that... Truck is through, how wide is the truck?
Our test pass at the corner should be cut off, so everyone's in charge. We see that coming way more to the cars. Every turn's gonna be difficult, too.
Well, the, the turning radiuses that the engineers come up with are comfortable turning radiuses.
For one side truck?
For a car inside for a, for a truck?
Oh, no, no, those are for trucks. So, when, when you look at the sheet that shows the turning radiuses, it shows it's not hitting the cars that are in the parking.
One length truck. 24 foot, 30 foot.
Single unit truck, it's like a big, big U K S.
How long? What does it say? I don't know.
More. 26 footer. No, you...
What's up with 28?
U K S is not 26.
U K S is smaller.
I think this just goes back to what we were saying before. Maybe you could, uh, eliminate some of the parking spaces on that corner of the building. Look, again, for me, to put it in perspective, we're not, you know, the, the biggest thing for me is a, a safety issue, right? But, yeah, if this is in the back corner of the building, let's just put it in perspective for a second. So, if you could eliminate some of those parking spaces back there, come up with a, uh, come up with a decent uh, turn in the area for the, for the trucks, and I mean, that's, so we had it. Then, you've, you've accomplished, I think, what we're talking about.
Yeah.
We just don't want trucks backed up in the parking lot, and people running around, you know, trying to walk around trucks. But I don't think that's what's happening here. I think that, right, you can eliminate some of those spots in the corner, some of the back corner. So, you can work that out.
Yeah.
It's not just the corner, I'm telling you.
It's the turning and stop.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so in other words, look, I, I'm, I'm looking at A1, right? I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, uh, the northwest corner of the building, right? And also the south, and also the south, uh, southwest corner of the building. That's where the trucks are gonna be circulating in and out of, right? 20 trucks at a time, they'll come. 20 trucks at a time, right? So, I mean, you're in retail business, right? But, so if you, if you look, if you look at the...
There are a few trucks at one time.
Okay, you have a few trucks. So, I think if you, if you figure out on the northwest side and the southwest side of the building, how to accommodate some trucks lining up, so you don't interfere with cars or the best in traffic or anything like that, that could be acceptable, I mean, from my, from my perspective.
Yes, and, and...
Most importantly, it's a safety, it's a safety issue.
A minor modification with a reduction of less than 20 parking spaces.
It's just a safety issue, yeah, so people walk around.
Hey, have you worked out with Brian to accommodate the, the parking for a truck to turn around?
They're, they're gonna have to do a compliance because of the, you know, they have the Charles and circulation works.
Would you review it before? Would that?
Would like to review it and see it before.
If the, if the board acts favorably, we can do it as we've done in the past, providing that plan, uh, in advance of the resolution so that the engineers can review with the board members, can't we?
To the chair? Why can't you need more repotter behind the building as well? So, why didn't you need more repotter behind the building as well? Bring the building off? So, why didn't you need more repotter behind the building as well, bring the building off that path, and then even if it's a one-way thing, if a truck breaks down, if the whole area is blocked, if no way of access to it, if no truck repair thing, it's very cramped, but it isn't one-way street, but it's very limited in the scope of what they could do there.
So, Brian, this old triangle here, where you go into Cedar Bridge, that's to prevent people from taking left turns?
Yes.
Okay, that's good, so, I guess, again, I'm a novice here, but you've got people coming out, trying to, and be taken, trying to take, if they want to take a right turn, they've gotta cross the traffic, and come through, and then try to take the right. And then I just see, like, people coming in at the same time, and they're on these with the screaming kids, just this little zone right here, I can see that exactly, getting a little cramped, is there any, again, I'm telling my ignorance, but could we move down the people going left? Right in this way.
But-
You've got a stop sign here, which is good.
Yes.
Right, there's a stop sign here?
Yes.
So, they're gonna be turning here, if there's any traffic here, she's gonna be waiting right here, people trying to come in, I can just see this becoming a nod. Is there any way you can maybe, here you got your retail, maybe you have one of them, so you can take the left here, and you've got, you can snap that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right over here, right, with this name?
Right, because this is your retail, this is in front of your retail, so they come in here, so you can have people coming in this way, but the people wanting to take a left turn here should be down here.
Yep.
Okay.
And close off it.
You want to make it in, you want it sold out.
In, yes.
I would say have one in, one-way in, and then maybe two-way in and out.
I got it.
You can continue.
Is that a bribe?
The trash enclosure has been provided, and it's pointed out that that's gonna be private pickup.
What, what, I mean, three things are literally private, D W, that it has to work, when we put the garbage, does the trucking get in there?
Yeah, and it does work, the garbage is in the back corner, a truck can come through, pick it up, the truck-
At any time, when people are parking all over, even if the truck will get through?
Well, it's like any-
Not just seven o'clock in the morning?
It's like any dumpster, that if somebody parks in front of it, the truck can't get it, but there's less likely event that somebody would be parking back here.
So, some of the truck will go where?
Well, the truck would come in the site, go one-way, because this is a one-way at eighteen feet, pick up the thing, better go-
If there's no truck, if the loading dock-
Well, we're gonna have the loading dock, we're gonna, yeah, we're gonna make room for that, we'll have a loading dock-
The truck will pass it?
Yes. Yep.
Anything else?
Okay, and the point of it being private pickup is, the D W doesn't pick up every day, except certain areas. Have a private contractor doing it, you need to pick it up every day, they'll pick it up every day.
And there's a lot of times, the engineers say on the board, no, D W doesn't want to do that, we'll private it, pick it up, but it has to work also.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Let's continue.
The comments on lighting and landscaping will satisfy our engineer, comment twenty-five indicates the-
Anything up to twenty-five, you agree?
Yes.
Okay.
Shade Tree Commission, I'll make my normal comment, we'll do all the reasonable comments of the Shade Tree Commission, and everything that's required by the ordinance. I'm looking through, they look generally reasonable, but we could work that out with the board's engineer, anything that's required by ordinance, clearly we're gonna do, and we'll accommodate their suggestions as best as possible. Twenty-eight, we're confirming that it is private light, and twenty-seven will make the revisions as set or required.
You agree with that?
Yes. And thirty-two on the traffic, I've gone over the traffic, the highlights are listed there. The report showed a peak hour trip generation for the A M of a hundred and seventy and P M of a hundred and twenty-one, and has indicated the intersection, the site access level, operator level of service were better. Just with respect to the relief that's required for the waiver, certainly this is a zone that was made for this type of use, the governing body approved it, it's permitted use with no bulk relief. The master plan of two thousand and seventeen, on page seven, indicates encourage growth and development in appropriate locations that consistent with established land uses. This is certainly consistent with what's next to it, and it's certainly an appropriate location, as indicated by the fact that the governing body zoned it that way. The municipal land use law, in the S A forty-four fifty-five, two, under the purpose of the act, indicates to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote health, taking more of general welfare. And this does that consistent with the master plan, it provides the needed services, it provides employment opportunities, and it provides shopping for the growing residential population in that area.
Good.
Okay.
Any questions on the board members?
Yeah, sidewalks coming from Cedar Bridge to the retail area, or, I think, need a little better sidewalks in there, walking in on the curves.
Interior.
Interior.
I agree, and to get it one step ahead of my friend, Mr. Klein, we'll provide crosswalks also, so that it's indicated where the, the crosswalks would be indicated across the driveway, so that-
Can you show us where we use the sidewalks, interior?
If you come down here.
Yes.
If we can come across here as well, and then you wanna have your crosswalks.
That'll be finished sidewalks, right?
Yes.
Not soil or trees in it?
No, no.
Because it's not marked, this is a sidewalk.
And the plans have-
Yeah, we would pick up the sidewalk that's out along Cedar Bridge Avenue, and we bring it into the site, and then we bring it, we do crosswalks, and make this a walking area, so that there's pedestrian access right up to the, and with painted crosswalks across the driveway.
So, one, two, and three aisles?
Yes, yeah.
On three, south, and middle, and now?
Yes, yep.
I make suggestions for future application, this has come up, I think, with every conversion application that we get, detail, what, I mean, Mr. Sable brings it up all the time, I fully agree with him, I think you should just show interior sidewalks, crosswalks, wherever possible, on future applications. Since you guys do a lot of-
Fair enough, we finish the sidewalk.
I think that, since something comes up all the time, which is really a safety issue, and there are a lot of workers, but-
It would save us all time, yes.
Brian, give me the sidewalk all the way across the middle, going from Cedar Bridge to the bottom, and then the other part, we have curbing over there, we have, I saw the gas meter and the water meters, I think we can work that out. I know it's a lot, where are we going? I think there's another complex where they sound.
Well, you could come up with something, maybe show it before, if we approve this, before, because we're gonna see something before the resolution passes.
Is there another development sound for this property?
This, this wraps around, if you remember, the other plan wraps around the south part.
There's no new application coming in for?
No, no, this is the, this is the, the end.
What's, what's, so this out?
Yeah, the drainage basin is in this-
Roll free.
Yes.
At least asphalt, maybe not, not, not-
Any other questions, any board members?
We'll open the public, we open the public lights, we are in discomfort.
Just for our firm customers, I want to give the conference more with the property than nothing but the truth.
Are you armed?
You live in the same block, huh?
I didn't look it up yet. Um, question, Brian. You're asking for a waiver for buffers in this property. I'm just going to point it out, what is the buffer from the parking to the right-of-way over here?
The buffer that's indicated in report is to the adjacent property, not to the right-of-way. We comply with it to the right-of-way, and if you look at the, on that same exhibit, you can see to the right-hand side, it's the same setback and the same configuration.
So, you don't need a buffer in the front of the-
We're not asking for a buffer relating to the right-of-way, that's not required.
If you would have eliminated all the buffer waivers that you're asking in this application, would you have enough parking?
If you listen to my testimony, it's my opinion that the buffers aren't needed, because we're-
That's not, that's not my question. My question was, if you eliminate the waiver of the buffer, do you have enough parking? I didn't ask you if it's needed or not.
Yes.
How much parking would you eliminate if you take, if you eliminate that buffer?
If you listen to my testimony, I don't think a buffer is required, so we're not eliminating anything, so the answer would be zero.
You're asking, again, you're trying to do the grand plan review, the, the, I'm, when you come from by right application, you ask, you have a waiver, with this waiver, you're using it for parking, because technically, if you would have, you come to the board, it's, I'm providing X amount of parking, and you, and if you would have not asked for the waiver of the buffer, you might have not had enough parking, especially is, if you're still asking for the easement, and still for the trucking thing, so I just, it's a normal question, the board should be able to calculate.
Excuse me, Mr. Flannery, can you just trace where the buffer would be with your finger on the map?
My testimony is that a buffer is not needed, the-
On whether it's needed, is there criteria for a buffer, it's supposed to be X over B?
There's buffer that's required, but not to the same use, and there's a buffer, we're not gonna provide a buffer to the conservation area. So, there's three sides of the property that potentially would have buffer requirements, and if you read section eight hundred of the buffers, it says, as required by the board, so that's why it's my testimony, we're not gonna provide a buffer to the conservation area, we're not gonna provide a buffer to the retention basin, and we're not gonna provide a buffer to a similar use.
What, the similar use buffer, where on that part, you know, on that property line, what's the required buffer, not the required buffer, the theoretically required buffer? How many feet, would it be, ten feet, twenty feet?
So, Jackson, normally you have a buffer between commercial and residential.
I'm just trying to get the answer he wants, so we can move on. I'm not saying what he says has merit or doesn't have merit, but I think it's fair for him to say, where would the line be if you put the full buffer on there, and then the board can weigh that.
The two design waivers mentioned in Roman number three, one and two, only impact to the wetlands.
How big is the buffer?
Can we stop going back and forth? The answer is, if the buffers were installed, you would not have enough parking, that's the answer, no jumping around the issue.
Thank you.
While I'm speaking, let me make sure that Brian understands what is being requested for the design waiver. The design waiver is only gonna be required on the east and south-
Hold on, don't interrupt him, please, go ahead.
The design waiver is only required on the east and south side of the lot, because to the north, you have Cedar Bridge, to the west, you already have Understark Avenue, so the buffer is intact on the west side. So, the design waiver that's requested is, on the east and south side, their testimony is, is that it's not needed, because you have similar uses on the east and south side.
It's like having two malls right next to each other.
Correct.
But Mr. Klein's point is, if you put a buffer in, there would be no parking, and he haven't answered, you have to decide what it is, but I think-
Right, you wouldn't have got parking, that's the answer, they're avoiding the answer.
Ocean County Mall, the three-over mall, you have all the stores, I'm sure it's separate owners, and there's no buffering between two buildings.
We don't know there's only-
I, I'm not saying Mr. Flannery's explanation, the board can accept that.
I think that's something we have to find reasons for.
Yeah, you have to wait, you have to find a title to his engine.
And I asked for sidewalk, but they didn't say there's no place for the buffer, that's on space.
And keep in mind, the legal criteria for buffers, you just have to have good reasons.
Right.
It makes sense.
Thank you.
And again, we're getting up and mentioning this is not because I'm trying to object to something, Mr. Michael, the applicant over here is a very decent, nice gentleman, and I wouldn't want to put him in any hardship, so don't take it near that I'm trying to object to something, I'm just trying to bring out a point, and help out Brian with his testimony. Um, the second thing is, as far as the sidewalks, explain to me is, there's a road going on wetland currently, where's the wetland start? You told me, I'll point it out, you have a road going over here, I doubt that it's on wetland, then you have a right-of-way that you usually put the sidewalks in, and then you have a property that was designated for wetland or restriction, so why is that, what?
You said conservation.
Whatever it is, usually you don't put the conservation easement on the right-of-way, you put it on the property that is adjacent to the right-of-way. The county has a road, and the sidewalks is usually on the right-of-way of the county. I doubt, I don't understand this, why the county was able to make a road, but we can't do the sidewalks on the right-of-way, if it's in the same designated thing, I understand this, if the property next to it was wetland, you can, but I don't understand.
The wetlands law came into effect in nineteen eighty-seven, Cedar Bridge Avenue has been there much longer than nineteen eighty-seven.
So, basically, you're saying is that currently the road is on wetland?
No.
So, how does it work, that they made it is that when the road ends, they-
Is there really a termase to this application, I think we're going off on a tangent, and Mr. Chairman, I think you could rein this in a little bit, because-
It is, I'll explain to you why it is.
Just tell us what your point is.
My point is, okay, I'll give you my point, my point is, there is a right-of-way that you could do sidewalks, you might have to go to the same D E P process, that is expensive, and to get it done, and the same thing is the county, if they wanna put it on their right-of-way, the whole Cedar Bridge Avenue sidewalks, they would have been able to put it into. The second point that I wanna bring, what? Again, if it's a county road-
Let's not emphasize the rock, anybody wanna talk here, let's, 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 let's just speak.
What I'm saying is, we have the same problem, when we went to the Chaparral Plaza over there, there was an issue with the D E P, the wetland, and the Zoot Nine over there, and they said is that they'll go to the D E P, and get it done, it's expensive, it's a process, I'm sure the county on their right-of-way could get in sidewalks, and the applicant should be able to do that too, but I wanna bring out a different point, we have around the lake, we have wetlands, and we have a pack over there, it's not sidewalks, but it's some type of gravel that complies with wetland requirements. So, there is lactop, there's other stuff that could be done, even though it's wetland, the fact is, people are walking over there, and making people go on the road is not acceptable, and not only for Mr. Sable's family, for all other families that might decide to do the same thing that your wife is doing. So, all I'm saying is, a pack, whatever could be done, and if you could go to the D E P, and get the sidewalk done, and file an application, and do it, the same way the county can do it, if it's their, on the right-of-way they can do it, I think is, Brian Flannery's applicant could do that too, unless if it's too much money, and you will send me a bill in the mail, I'm not sure about that, but I'm saying is, if you can put in sidewalks, at least make a pack, that is unacceptable and inflexible on wetland. Final thought, there's a basement over here, is there going to be a sand hall? What is this basement, for what purpose is that basement made?
Except for storage.
I know what it says. I know what it says.
No, central hall, and it's for storage only.
So what happens is, you could, why do you need to put in a sprinkler over here if it's only one floor? Usually?
Normal ten thousand square feet, I think, or something.
You mentioned you're putting in a sprinkler.
Putting in a sprinkler.
Is it because it's two floors?
Normally, normally one sprinklers, and now I'm putting in, you're asking why?
No, I'm asking why you're required to do that.
Because it's a good thing to do, you say that all the time.
No, 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 is that a requirement that you have to do in this application?
This application doesn't have, doesn't have a requirement for sprinklers. When the buildings are designed, there may be, for whatever the particular reasons, there may be a requirement. But we're not waiting to see if we can get around it. We're saying right up front, we're going to do sprinklers.
My understanding is, when you do a basement on a building, they consider that two floors, and you need a sprinkler, that's the reason why Brian mentioned. And the reason why I'm bringing this up, I know it says storage, but you could have, you know, you could have shelves that starts going down. You could have like a teacher's edition or whatever they have over here. They have piled up papers and, and whatever, and then you go down and you have more shelves. It makes, what makes a big storage and what makes something open.
So one second, Brian, the basement, if it's a storage only, there are no outside rentals on the basement. It's only stores who have upstairs, they have the basement.
Correct.
Okay.
I'm finishing up, don't worry, don't worry.
I'm finishing up.
I, I, the, the, the point I'm bringing, is this going to be a finished basement or an unfinished basement? It's going to be raw, usually a storage?
If I, I just want on record that they cannot rent all the basement.
I understand this, is it going to be a finished basement or unfinished?
It's going to be finished to the extent that it can be used for storage.
How high is going to be the ceiling of the basement? I'm, I'm finishing up, one second. Okay, I got an answer in the back, it says nine foot from the applicant. He, even though he didn't come in and whatever, and he sworn in, I'm okay, I didn't object to the application, I just?
You have to learn how to tune that kind of stuff out.
Why?
So it's from the back, you just have to learn to ignore it.
Thank you.
Dave, going back to his question, is it possible for a path or sidewalks on the wetland or wetland? That was a question one of the?
He, he makes, he makes a point about going for an application that you can. The question is, you're only going to gain about a hundred feet or a hundred fifty feet in that whole stretch of Cedar Bridge.
And then what is?
And the rest of it's going to be most likely on the county, because you can't, whoever owns next to it has to make it the township for that matter. Well, if you're next to it to the west, isn't it going to do anything?
Problem is, I'm just, I, I know it stepped down already, I just want to bring that up. The problem is, when I go to the county, or when I go to the town, or whichever has the right of way, and I ask them for putting in sidewalks, they usually won't put it in if there's a private property, you know, next to it, because the, the zone is that the private developer has to put it in. So it's just filling up the gaps, we try to push it, there's more sidewalks you put to the developments, and then ask the county or the town to come in to fill in the gaps. The more gaps we leave, for whatever reasons, the harder it is for Mr. Sables' family to be able to walk in the rest of it.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
I have a strength, we'll encourage the doctor to finish another, another stretch.
We're talking about between a hundred and a hundred fifty feet of sidewalk on the west. And you have a half a mile from there, that's township-owned property, E-restricted property, all along a county road. Neither the county or the town is going to build that other half a mile of sidewalk, we don't know.
We don't know, and I, I think we should encourage as much as possible, if it's legal to do, to have sidewalks as much as possible, if people are walking and people are getting hurt along them.
And, and, and this project is subject to CAPRA jurisdiction, so it's different than the property that, uh, was referred to, uh, on, on Route nine, because that was not in CAPRA, this is in CAPRA. CAPRA is going to look at this sidewalk issue, CAPRA is going to have a problem with somebody putting a path through the wetlands. If somebody, if somebody does a path through wetlands on their own, CAPRA, nobody cares. But CAPRA is going to have a problem with a half a mile path through wetlands. There, there probably is a way that the county or the township could get an approval. It would be a very expensive sidewalk. Uh, and, and my testimony is, I don't expect to be alive at, at any point on their sidewalk.
So young.
Going through the church, can't we?
My kids, if, if we build a hundred feet of sidewalk on Cedar Bridge, we're encouraging people to run across Cedar Bridge when there's no traffic, you know, crosswalk, that's, that's?
There's two traffic lines there, it's like over, and this one is?
Oh, you want, well, that's pretty far still.
We're going up to the traffic light.
Oh, you're going to do, you're going to do a sidewalk up to the traffic light, right?
And then you want another hundred feet.
Why?
Usually?
It's a, that's a mile, there's a?
The reason, the reason is, because people are walking anyways. People are walking there all the time.
I, I've got, I've got a brief, Brian.
So, so people are walking there all the time, every day.
But I, I, no, I have a lot of people joining, I was involved in thinking that this all state, no, no?
Yellow belly sap, sap, or people, okay, it's, it's, yeah, people are walking there.
I know, but we're never, we're never, we're never doing sidewalks there, that, that must never have happened.
You know, you're right about protecting pedestrians. On the other hand, trend by recorded documents in perpetuity in effect, say, they're protecting the public because they're protecting woodlands and the wetlands and the environment, and it should stay that way forever. And CAPRA says, we gave you all of these interlocking approvals, and you can't touch that.
Okay.
On, on the issue of the basements, let me go out for a second, is there any access on the exterior from the front of the building to the basement, or is it just as you said for storage, access on the back of the building, or is it interior access?
That was a side of the building, no.
Inside.
Inside access, so there's no way you can go to the back, but the front, you can't get down to the base site.
What is the back side?
A fire safety, that's on the corner.
There are fire safety.
It's always.
No, you can't, you can't, yeah.
Everything has to be on record, you have to swear on it.
So it's not for?
We just saw Mr.?
Any deliveries or whatever, it would be, has to come in through the inside of the building.
Right.
Mr. Stern was against sidewalks.
That was all they do renting it out, outside vendors.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard on this application, please come forward. Sign on, come, sign on, we're close to the public. And we ask for motion on this application?
Uh, I'll make a motion to put the application, but there's a lot of things that we, I think, that we discussed regarding, um?
Mr. Jackson, would you take the notes?
Regarding crosswalks, regarding, uh, loading and loading areas for trucks, and, uh?
So we had the loading, unloading for sidewalks.
Hey, hey, I, I.
We're moving the, did you talk about moving the entryway?
Yes.
We talked about?
We talked about the entryway, um, I think there's a lot of things that, you know, again, if the board, if the board approves this, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't, I can't.
It's subject to everything that we've talked about.
Yes, it would be subject to everything we've talked about, and I think we would like, want to see a plan before we, before we pass the?
Yeah, should we do it again?
Uh, but not like a day before, no, it was not to take a look.
Anything else that we've talked about?
We can, uh, have the revised plan with all the changes at the time of adoption of the revolution, and just get in a week before the revolution.
I'd have a list of the, for my personal perspective, this week before, hence why you're looking at it.
So there, was there anything else that we mentioned that would, they agree to?
Not that they do cover all the others.
Okay, so I think, based on that, I make a motion to, to approve this.
Do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay. Two seconds, Mr. Meyer's second, Mr. Fur's second. Okay, roll call please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flinck?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Modern?
Yes.
Mr. Raitzer?
Yes.
The audio, the audio field should, was on, we said that the basements can't be rented out. Mr. Jackson?
No, well, we may not rent it out of the basement.
Now, for outside vendors, only for the people above it, and they have storage on this. Storage. Like, it's not on the whole floor, renting out, but they will, they can, they can.
It's for the users.
I told them, if it uses upstairs, okay. One at a time, please.
I just want to pitch it.
Okay, now, you ready?
SD twenty-three eighty-eight by Alan Striker. This is a minor subdivision for a lot line adjustment. It's currently two lots, the main is two lots, but then you need a lot line over to accommodate, I believe, the sewer extension.
Okay, and? Wait, is it been any for you on the report?
Um, yes, going to the report. They requested a submission waiver from, uh, North to Ocean County, or, and the reason is, they want, they want to see the board actually entertain this before they make application to, uh, Ocean County.
Why did, what's right now, we're keeping two lots, is this going to be a lot?
Correct, what, what they're, what they're doing suddenly is the, uh, the two lots are side by side. Both front Apollo, the corner lot also fronts, uh, Squonk Road. And they want to take a ten-foot strip of land from the corner lot, an exit to the interior piece, so that they get a, uh, sewer line to the back of that property.
And the both lots have been fronting to the Apollo, not to Quonk?
Correct, yeah, how did, they're already, they're constructed, the house is constructed.
Why shouldn't, uh, Ocean County, what do they care in your, I know we need a separate lot for the sewer line?
Uh, they, because Squonk and Rosie County are. So they, they, they have to prove all some of the reasons, especially ones like that.
And so, why do you get all kind of power? They're not making any other size lots, they're moving over to lot number?
That would be correct. Yeah, what we're, uh?
Anything else?
Well, they, they do require variances to do this, and, uh, let me go, let me go through those for you. The, uh, the request a lot width variance for that ten-foot that they're, uh, going out to Squonk Road, that technically requires a width variance. Now, I will point out the, uh, the lot needs to be on the, on the other front. Existing sheds require, uh, uh, setback variances for accessory structures. And that happens on, uh, on, uh, both of those lots. Four, four, forty-eight oh one and forty-eight oh nine need side yard setback variances, and forty-eight oh one needs a rear yard setback variance. And the, uh, technically, the, uh, driveways are not long enough to provide, uh, four Wall Street parking spaces, uh, but they are large enough, uh, where you can get, uh, two cars, you have the garage in, and, and another parking space, and that would technically require, uh, variances for the number of Wall Street parking spaces. However, that is the existing condition.
They could widen the driveway, they have four.
They, they could do that if you require that.
That's what you?
Yeah, yeah, you can require that. And then the last thing is, they need a design waiver from, uh, Edith Seateris.
Thank you. How, how are you?
I'm great, how are you? That's why I, uh?
If he's one.
Nah, it's where, for the testimony I'll give before the court, the truth, not the whole truth, nothing about the truth.
Yes, I do.
Name?
Charles Vermont, engineer for the applicant. Okay, there's a, uh, uh, the sewer, the sewer terminates at Joda, which is about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty feet south of where that ten-foot strip comes out of Squonk. So that's the purpose of the subdivision.
They're making speed lots, right?
No, we're, no, we're attaching the ten-foot strip to the interior lot. We're just providing access for utilities to that ten-foot strip.
There's a sewer right now on Apollo, no, not yet, they're bringing it down Squonk?
Not there, no, not, not.
They're bringing it down Squonk now.
Pardon?
They are, see, they're bringing it down Squonk now.
Well, as of right now, it's only towards Joda, which is the Wyndham Townhouse driveway.
They're going, they're going further, I know, they're further.
They can't reach, they can't reach Apollo due to the shallow, the shallow Joda, and I don't, I don't, I don't believe it's a problem.
It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Just for, from testimony, before this word, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, yeah. Please take me, I was, pardon?
He's just picking the mic, he's saying?
Please call your last name, S T R E R C H E R.
I think they're bringing the sewer line all the way up to the?
They are, Apollo, come, far from the new sewer line, Apollo, it will be on the road. Apollo is held out. So we, that was my first try to get the sewer down Apollo. The most basic thing you do is America would have given me an easier to do a property, they want me to have access to the thing. So my only way to get sewer would be off Squonk, and that's why I think my front foot strip, so I could get my sewer. No additional lots, all lots are?
And that ten-foot is going to go to the interior lot?
Into the interior, I'll build a road in that ten-foot strip, sewer from Squonk to the back to my backyard alley.
Does, does result in, uh, those two rear yard shed setbacks? The shed setbacks on the interior lot are already, it's already an existing condition.
Does anyone else in the area want, uh, the sewer line or shed, it's limited for your property?
It's not my, my.
Yes.
That, it's on a private line, it can't, I, yeah.
The, uh, the driveway on the corner lot does have a gravel area off the right side, which provides, uh, parking for a couple additional cars.
Normally, we'd like to see four parking spaces.
Existing models, they're still like this, there is no additional car, we're still, that was, uh? No basements, both houses don't have a basement.
He's leaving all the house, uh?
He goes per bedroom? Four, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, maybe that's better?
And in my house, there's a three, although I, I don't know.
What, one per bedroom, one per bedroom, or?
Now, it, it doesn't, it doesn't mark that widely, see the family against the form? Uh, now, the reason is, probably, uh, it sounds like he complies with the grades by the number of bedrooms in his house.
I think it's two point eight upstairs, you know, one point people in the basement, no?
No.
Four bedroom cars, three, three bedroom really are required, so.
Underneath.
Okay. Okay.
I just need sewer, you, right, it's all done, sewer.
Okay.
You mean a sewer.
Any, any questions, any more? See, now, a lot of love to the public.
Just for our firm's customer to give the course more with the truth, the whole?
There's one question that you?
I affirm, um, I just, I'm not objecting to this, if there's any parking way in this part, uh, this property, I just want to speak about the subject, but I'm not objecting. I was in a political court in New Square, and they were discussing planning and zoning board on the property, and I asked them, I think maybe I should go to the meeting. No, 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 don't go to our meetings. So I asked them, you know, I want to make my point, to find out what's going on, but no, they asked, we had a meeting with the chairman, we'll take care of everything, and then the, by the board, there's only a formal process that they get everything approved. But one thing in New Square is, they give waivers on everything, except the sidewalks, obviously, they always had sidewalks. They don't give waivers on driveways. You need parking, if you don't have enough, whatever square footage they figured it out, you need it. There's no waivers, there's no variances, so even in a town like New Square, if anything goes, and parking is the only thing that they make sure that everybody complies with. I don't think legal, that is, you can't go, get in New Square, you have a public meeting, people come, you could record, nobody tells you no.
Mike, what's your point?
My point is, when?
But I think Mr. Vermont testified that these houses, because they're small, they need, they need two parking spaces, is that correct?
Other than the state residential group, is that right?
Yes.
Correct, I just heard some testimony before, is that there is some parking issues, so I brought up that issue. I didn't say is that I'm objecting, the fact is that it was brought up, like I said before to Brian, I was trying to help out Mr. Vermont to make his testimony, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public who'd like to be heard, sign on, close to the public, rest promotion of this application?
I make a motion to your approval.
This point moves, in the front of seconds, roll call please.
Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Flinck?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Raitzer?
Yes.
Thank you. My last application is SD twenty-three eighty-seven by Joseph Supra, it's a minor subdivision that created two lots from one on six.
Dave, do you have anything?
Well, the report, believe it or not, it's, uh, oversize, it's an oversized lot, and it's going to be subdivided into? and it's going to be subdivided into two conforming lots.
Variance free.
Variance free, design level free.
Why is it free? Why are you coming for more funds?
Because we didn't, we didn't attach the new building. We attached it, we wouldn't even have coming.
You swear or affirm that the testimony that you will give before the court with the truth, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but.
I do. Joseph Kishuba, Navy Engineering Services, Madison, Oregon. We have a fully conforming minor subdivision, the RM zone, create two seventy-five hundred square foot lots. No setback variances proposed. Again, this would be administrative, or to create some kind of connection between the two homes. But because it's two single families, we are required to come before you for a approval. We are proposing sidewalks, pardon.
It's RM over there?
It's RM, there you go.
And the duplex is, is that the ones?
A single family.
Two single family, not a duplex, with duplex. Right. And seventy-five hundred is legal in our.
Correct.
Do you agree with everything in the report?
We reiterate in the report. That would conclude my testimony.
Just for my education, why, why, why did you have to come to us?
Uh, because any subdivision of two single families requires board approval regardless of conformity or not.
That's interesting.
But they do allow administrative for duplex lots.
That's interesting.
Currently, there's one house there.
Currently, there's one, I believe there's, yes, one house.
Which will lock down a bit of these two?
Correct.
Any one, one more, any questions?
No, I'm, I'm mistaken, there are actually four units there now.
Are you making two?
We're making two single-family homes on a four.
Just a vibe, right? It's soft. Okay, move up into the public now, Mr. Klein.
What am I going to say on this one?
I don't know.
How many parking spots are you providing?
Four, each.
Four and stacked up.
Correct.
And how many bedrooms is in each unit? But he just, let, let me explain to you. We provide a lake with four, the calculations that we usually do on a single-family home or duplex. Four parkings per unit.
Let me, let me be clear, that because this is a single family, we do have to submit lot plans for each of these. Is that a duplex or a townhome? Uh, so the parking will be reviewed by township at the time of application. We're creating two lots essentially at this point, we're not reviewing them.
But you're stipulating that you will give the four.
We're stipulating we're giving four who comply with the township's requirement.
And sidewalks, you can make up some.
Yes.
And just for, you just mentioned that, who reviews them to make sure that they put in?
Uh, the township engineer.
The township, the same department over there.
Same company, different departments.
Correct.
Different departments, that they calculate the parking, so whatever approval you get now for four, it's still subject to how many bedrooms you go randomly.
If we submit a plan with more bedrooms, we have to provide more parking.
Is that correct, Mrs. Morris?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your question.
That is correct.
Thank you.
If, if he comes up with a house that needs five parking spaces, he could do that as block plan, even though, even though this says four.
Provided the.
What I'm saying is that if he comes up with an eight-bedroom house and he needs more parking, you guys can catch up on him.
Correct.
Or he comes back for the board and asks for whatever.
Especially for variances, correct.
I think the property is going to be divided into the middle?
Yes.
So it's two separate owners, not related, and random people, it's not necessarily.
Correct, right now it's one owner, it'll be split in two, and then it'll have two owners.
It's not going to be all the single use for both families, it's going to be right up like a regular family.
Right, two single, two separate, single-family homes.
That's the motion of the separation?
I have a motion to approve, yeah.
Mr. Flanshaw moves.
Second.
Mr. Meyer, second, roll call.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Flanshaw.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mr. Raisin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I was trying to figure out something. Was a tough one, this one.
Okay, and just for the record, the joint fifth meeting, we're keeping the parkers staying on. All members of the video. The fifth is the. I'll, I'll, Mr. Jackson, I'll have a card with Mr. Stern. Mr. Jackson cannot be here.
I remember.
He has. Mr. Kid, could he?
Yes. He's a representative of multiple boards, he's a municipal attorney, he's a very experienced, like he's.
You're like the security guard. All right, fine.
We, we think it's going to be the testimony of the objectors' witnesses. So I think we'll be able to watch it, and I would want to see that at least.
No, we're not going away, right, right.
So, so I, I, I'm sure it's fine.
Ally, I'm just going to remind you, please send out an email, make sure we have those five members out of the forum.
Yes.
And is there anything else in that note?
No.
No.
Can we put some schools in there?
And I believe Mr. Raisin was going to speak with you about whether he can sit on an application, potentially watch the recordings.
He can, he just has to listen to the tapes and certify that he's listened to the, to the tapes.
I can't just read transcripts.
You ever read the transcripts? I haven't seen transcripts.
We don't have transcripts, we have minutes, and those are not the same, to my understanding.
We might be able to reach out to the, I would be surprised if somebody's getting transcripts.
You need to listen to play-by-play, or read play-by-play.